Oh, see, technology is all about having us some fun today. I see us. That's all good. So what I was saying was I apologize that I didn't hear the, um, funny, I didn't hear the mute our mic piece on the echo piece. So forgive me that it was echoing throughout. Um, but now y'all can hear us. Now it's good. But really the point is just, um, really appreciate y'all, um, being in the space and just want to give y'all a moment to just take a deep breath. Cause what we just saw is not something we see every day and reminded of every single day. But just want to give y'all a moment, um, to just reflect, um, what are you feeling after seeing that? And I think I heard that if folks, um, raised their hand that you can come off mute perhaps are, um, we'll try that if that happens for those folks who are, um, yes, I see. Yes, Kyriishi, I see you got a, you got a hand up. Yes, let's hear from you. Yes, Kyriishi is now in the stream with us, I think.
What's up Kyriishi?
Hey, 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 y'all. I love it. I'm like, oh, my folks is on the screen and I'm looking at the chat and I'm like, my folks is in the chat. Um,
Yes.
So, so I just want to say real quick, um, thank you all for the offering. Um, I just remember seeing it. I got to see it before COVID. And one, it's so amazing to see the way, you know, the power of having a living museum and seeing how it's, uh, uh, grown and transformed since then. And there are elements in it that weren't in it when I saw it, right? Um, so that it continues to be new and fresh is, is an exciting thing to me. Um, it speaks to my, you know, I have a degree in theater arts with emphasis in dance. So it speaks to my artist self. Uh, it speaks to my, uh, childhood. I was raised Pan African in an African centered village. And my cousins, um, literally because they were like, oh, they're not really teaching all y'all history. So at all of our schools during Black History Month, they would create a museum. And it would, one week at my school, one week at this school, and, and the students would be able, like classrooms were going and, and toured through it. But it wasn't living, right? You know, it was like, uh, a gas mask and light, the stoplight and things like that, right? For us to get the information. But the thing about having the, the, the living part, um, you, it, you get to embody the experience. Like you got to, like, I got to feel what, and to what he might, might have felt like, right? Um, and, uh, brother man, I can't think of his name that, uh, you did for Timbuktu. I was like, he's the perfect person. Who I'm losing everybody's name, but, uh, what's his name with the, with the snake? I like all of those elements.
Brother Sid, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you Sid. My brother Elijah was in Timbuktu.
Thank, thank you. And then, um, and the marketplace, like it was just so, I was like, oh my goodness, like it, it all felt like I was there. And I just remember taking my young people when, um, you, you all did it before COVID and being blown away then. And I'm, I didn't think it was gonna be the same effective for me watching it because I've already been there and watching it on screen. But it was, it's just so powerful, so powerful. Such an amazing offering. And I just want to thank y'all for that.
Hmm, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Venus was so excited when you were coming. That's what they, I will say.
Hmm, yes. Yeah, that's, um, that's the, that's the process, y'all. Is it really?
I actually like that. Anybody else want to raise a hand and pop in?
Yeah.
Chime in with us, hear your thoughts, hear your voice, see your face.
Um, as folks are thinking about that, I just will say that, um, you know, part of this work is really was, is that is like to bring history to life in a really different way. It's one thing to read about things. It's one thing to like, you know, go to a place, but it's like another to like go to a place that's all of it, all at once, like, you know, and even, you know, when we think about all of it, this is not all of our history. There's no way that we could do all of our history in one little spot. Like it's the world, right? The entire world. And so this is a story, um, of, you know, how black folks got to, um, to Oakland, to the Bay, and then what's our future from there? So, um, it's not even our, actually even our personal stories necessarily, um, or our family stories. You know, my family is from Jamaica, so we got to the States in a different way. So just thinking about, you know, there's all kinds of different ways that we create space, but it's really about how do we have opportunities to share our story? And to tell our story. And that's part of creating those spaces for us to liberate ourselves and our hearts and our minds, right?
Yeah, thank you Trish. I see, I see you chime in.
Yeah, thank you. Exactly. Thank you Trish. Yes, indeed. Yeah. So I know we have just a little bit more time and we definitely want to open out to, to Q and A for folks and, and have more of a conversation. So we want to just share one other piece of a project for folks. Um, are y'all okay to, to keep going? Or y'all need a minute? How we feeling? How's everybody doing? We working with this technology, y'all. If y'all are good, good to proceed. If you need a moment or want to reflect on something else, then let us know. Yep, I see some love coming in. Thank you. Feeling good. Thanks Melissa. Alright, cool. So it is an opportunity, you know, as you think about, you know, as a, one of the things that we always ask as a conversation piece for folks is like, what are you feeling and what do you want to do with that feeling? Sometimes folks are always thinking about, you know, maybe feel angry or maybe feel sad, but what you want to do with that anger or sadness, right? How do we help to transform our conditions? How do we, or joy, or whatever it might be, right? Like I'm feeling inspired. I'm feeling resilient. So whatever the feeling is, just give yourself a moment to understand that feeling. And also ask yourself at a moment about what, what do you want to do with that feeling? How do you want to use that feeling to create liberation in your heart and in your mind? In your internal and your interpersonal and your institutional. That is our work. Everybody take a deep breath in. And exhale fully. Word. Alright, so the next piece we want to share with you all, um, is, um, about our, um, sorry, our Spare Works Retreat Space that we are building out here, um, in the sweet little town called Wee, California, the base of Mount Shasta. And we were blessed with, um, being able to acquire 20 acres, um, of land that's right at the, uh, right at the, uh, border of the National Forest, Trinity National Forest, um, and really being able to think about how we creating this space, right? There's a, um, 30 plus person capacity for us to really create space for healers, for educators and frontline workers. Um, and really create a space for us to, um, really honor and love up on the land. Um, and create ways that we engage with the land that will support this work that doesn't necessarily deplete it and it's not extractive. It's not, um, just consumptive, but it's actually a co-creating together with the earth and with the land that's here and the trees and the environment. And the seasons that exist and the realities of, of, you know, where we are in the world and, and, and so forth. So really being able to create that sustainable living space. Um, but also have space for us to do our own rituals, to do our own process. Sometimes our healing is not quiet and cute. You know, we've been doing retreats for years and always going to retreat spaces that are not owned and operated by us. And we always have to think about how we have to just be quiet. And sometimes like we don't be quiet, like we dance and we sing and we cry and we, you know, we do what we do, right? And so they'll be able to create a space for us to do what we do and honor our ways, our cultural healing practices that are really essential to our work. Um, is what we wanted to create as well as time and space for us to reflect and restore, renew. Um, and again, it's 20 beautiful acres, um, in Wee, California, um, at the base of Mount Shasta. And we are in the works, we, uh, of building this space. Um, it's not open yet and we hope to open in 2024. And part of that work is really just gathering with folks on intergenerational way to really able to honor, um, you know, all these different ways. Like really grounded into what the earth is in, grounded into what we want to create. Um, and really thinking about different ways to, um, to honor and support, uh, the land and the legacy of creating these.
No, I think we covered it, yeah.
I do actually have, and I'm going to put into the chat, um, we are, are doing, um, a survey with folks to be able to, um, get community impact and feedback around what it is that folks want to see in, at a retreat space, what will be healing for you, what will be nourishing for you. Um, as we're, you know, starting this build out and, you know, phases along the way. Um, and so we'd love to be able to share that with y'all. Put it in the chat in just a moment. Um, but really just, this is some of the visions. We have a yurt, 30 foot yurt that's ready to, to be built. Um, and really just creating a vision for us to ground into the earth and unplug a little bit and just be with each other in a really beautiful, um, fabulous ways. So that is that other component of our retreat space. Um, do you all have any questions actually about that before we go any further? Yes, yes.
Nice.
Alright, cool.
Yeah, I definitely say, you know, going back to the time, you know, creating liberated spaces takes time. I think we got the, we bought the land in 2020.
Yeah.
And at this point, all we have is a well on it.
Yeah.
And you know, it, it, it sounds discouraging. And at the same time, it just changes the trajectory, you know what I mean? To a two-year plan turn into a 10-year plan real quick. When you're in, you know, rural America, small town dynamics.
Yeah.
You know, economics, you know, Mizan and I are definitely not balling. You know what I mean? But you know, it's just like.
And all of this, we funded on our own.
Yeah.
You have a few small grants and sponsors of folks, but, um, you know, deep pockets are always appreciated. They want to share, just put it out there, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that was also the piece why, you know, for our own liberation, we didn't necessarily want to compromise the vision. And we didn't want to be beholden to too many things that weren't in line with our values.
Yeah.
You, you know what I mean? We didn't want to have to say, okay, we took this money, so we have to do this on the land because that's not liberation.
Yeah.
Right? That goes against everything that we are, you know, about. And I think, um, even though, you know, anything worth having is going to take a little sacrifice and time.
Yeah.
Right? And, and where, where are we choosing to put energy? I think is really what, what, um, what came up for us while being out here. And, um, I think that's just really been my reflection, just slowing down and really listening to, you know, you know, like when you're a teacher, I don't know how many teachers we have in line, but I used to be a teacher. And you know, sometimes you'd be working all night on that hot curriculum and you just know you're about to serve tomorrow. And, and the whole classroom is just, is somewhere different. Like the curriculum that you created wasn't relevant. I think that happens sometimes when we think about off the grid living or, or creating spaces. We have these ideas of what it is. But we also have to be willing to pivot. And I think that's where some of that grace comes in, um, for one with self. And then just also just with the situation, um, and like I saw magic for that, G magic. He's typing in G magic. But yeah, you know, like I say, um, definitely open to anyone wanting to raise a hand, you know? If you wanted to verbalize anything or if you're cool just putting it in the chat, it's good. If you have any questions. But yeah, you know, um, we're hopeful though, we are hopeful that, um, I would say definitely by summer next year, we'll be able to set off our first retreat. Everything will be in place for it to, you know, host at least maybe 10 to 15 people. So we're, we're thankful for that.
Yeah, thank you.
The trajectory is looking.
Looking hopeful.
Looking hopeful.
Yeah. So I did put our, our website and our, um, email in the chat. It's both spiritworks.com and spiritworks@gmail. Um, that you can connect with us that way. But we did want to just share with y'all as we closing out our conversation, just a few things that have guided some of our vision and, and values about how we bring about and create liberated spaces. Um, so we're just a little bit more and then we'll open out to, um, questions. And one of the things that we always think about is that, you know, this healing process, liberation process is a process, 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 all the time, right? So being able to use a mirror, like what's our stuff? What's mine to hold? What's somebody else's? How are we continuing this self-reflection process that we continue to refine ourselves? We also always move with this concept, see and need, feel and need. We watch a lot. We have five children together. And, um, we watched, we've watched a lot of children's movies over the years. So if you ever get to the robots or whatever, see and need, feel and need, right? That there's a way that if you see something, be able to, um, help support and do what you can because we're all in this together. Um, and we have two ears and one mouth, you know, we were wanting to make sure that we listening, which I wish we could hear y'all voices a little bit more in this space, but just be able to listen so that we really build those transformative relationships. And again, going back to that piece around grace, just giving ourselves grace and giving each other grace when sometimes that we are, um, as, as we accept responsibility for what we are doing, when we make mistakes, you know, that accountability is real, but not accountability with shame, but accountability with grace. Cause oftentimes we, uh, put the cancel folks out when they make a mistake. But for us to really liberate and build each other up, we got to shift from that cancel culture to really understanding the power of grace and acceptance and awareness that way. You want to talk about these?
Values and practices, the power of the presence, right? Power in the present moment, putting all your concentration into the now, you know what I mean? Being, being in the now, kind of ease of some of the suffering too.
Yes.
Right? Get able to just come to just this moment right here, right? Wellness is a process. You must have wrote this. Wellness is a process. But yeah, you know, like you just enjoy the journey, you know what I mean? Like my elder used to say, if you fall off, just fall back on. You know, we all fall off sometimes, you know what I mean? Just fall back on. It's all good. Just, just keep moving, you know, um, and, 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 you know, fully engage into your wellness, you know? And it looks different for everybody. It's not going to be the, I'm, I'm not the yoga person. I'm actually like a moving meditation kind of person. Like my wellness looks like chopping wood and hiking, right? You know what I mean? It's just, or writing rhymes or something like that. So, you know, of course there's some basics, drink water, you know, healthy diet, things of that nature. But your wellness is yours to claim and own.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, with cancel culture, it's so, it's so, uh, easy to cancel and then just write people off these days. But you know, creating belonging, that, that is social justice. You know, going back to kind of what Mizan was saying, um, you know, sometimes we could be so caught up in our social movements that we actually, um, we aren't creating belonging. We're, we're creating a lot of, um, enemies, a lot of polarization just from our beliefs.
Hmm.
And, you know, even within our righteousness, sometimes we can be wicked, you know what I mean? And that's just something that I just want us all to be mindful of, starting from self. And just knowing that, you know, we, we all are here to, to pull out the best and highest aspects of our humanity. You know what I mean? Starting with self and hopefully that spills over into our interpersonal relationships and institutional. You know, I had to throw the three eyes back in, just to bring it home, right? Transformative relationships, you know, and capitalism, everything is a transaction. So within those transactions, you know, try to create some time for transformation, try to create some time for some value, like something that value. I value this relationship beyond what I can gain from, right? I value this relationship because I am, because we are, you know, your growth and, and my growth are interconnected, your shine and my shine. You know, we create a bigger shine, right? So just thinking of those things and, you know?
Yeah.
Values and practices.
Those are some of the things that have guided some of our work over the years, um, that we wanted to share with you all. Um, and then I know folks have asked about how they can help support, um, but we would definitely wanted to leave y'all with this list of things. Um, so financial support is always helpful, um, but it's also linkages to like other philanthropic partners or networks. It's for folks to be able to, um, you know, we do trainings and professional development for folks, um, across the way. If you know folks who need it, let's do it, right? We also are selling on our website, um, our affirmation card decks. They are, because we are affirmation card decks. Um, that are part of those signs that we also shared around the community. Um, but there's all kinds of different ones that you can see. There's a set of 50. Um, you know, if there's other real estate assets or other, you know, skills or linkages or folks, media coverage, let's let your folks know, right? And, uh, uh, if all else, any of that that you can't do, prayers and good energy is always, um, helpful, um, for folks to just making this, this vision manifest. So as we continue to build, uh, we wanted to leave y'all with that because that's also part of the liberation process. It's like, how do we send good energy to each other to lift each other up and liberate each other?
And I just thought that the Spirit Works was a typo. So don't copy that hashtag. Let's go back.
Oh. It sure is. I do that all the time.
So, so it's S P E A R I T. The T and the W is, is, is mixed up on both of them actually.
I do that all the time. It's crazy.
I just, I just saw that. So if you're all looking for us and you're using these particular ads, um, just switch the T and the W around.
Yeah, Spirit Works. Yeah. Thanks y'all. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I just saw it now.
And we wanted to leave y'all this before we open out to questions and, uh, Q and A conversations with each other. And I'm going to leave that, um, link in the chat for you all to give your feedback and your input around what, uh, healing centered retreat space could look like. We want to leave y'all with this on the liberated line. I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. Bigger than our dear ancestor, Dr. Maya Angelou. Um, and this is real. This is, this is liberation, right? How do we, how, what do we leave in people with, right? So that they can transform themselves and their relationships and their institutions. Here is our contact information and here it is, and definitely this spelled correctly. Um, so if folks are interested, um, you can definitely, um, be able to reach out to that. And I'm going to put the, um, link to the, um, the chat. Um, excuse me, the link to the, um, survey if folks are interested in filling that out. I'll put that into the chat right now. Um, and we would love to, um, hear, um, any other thoughts that y'all have, folks that comments, questions, let's do a little Q and A time. Let's bear with each other for the last little 10 minutes we have of our session.
Yes, and it's always a balance in our house. I'm gonna, I'm going to pick my children up from school.
They're okay.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Okay, cool, 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 cool. Alright, cool.
They're big kids. They're high school students. They can wait a few minutes. Let's talk to each other. How we doing? Thank you Devon. I see your thing. Holly, I will definitely put this, uh, in the chat as well. Um, thank you. Let me just copy that. Oops. Actually, we're working with technology. Talk to us, y'all. How y'all feeling? How's things folk, um, feeling with folks? What are you interested in? What's curious to you? Um, how are we doing? Can I do both of these things at one time? Did I just close this out? Nope, I didn't. Uh, I see a couple of questions in here. Uh, let's see. We're not far, uh, from the city. Uh, we come down there often enough, uh, Carla, so let's link if you like. Um, Holly has a question. Do you take this real quick around how do teachers respond to our work?
Oh, I think, um, once we're able to, um, get the teachers out of work mode, they, they love it. But most times when we show up, we're doing, um, it's during their PD time. And just the way that the system is kind of set up, you know, PD time is important. But, um, you know, I think the teachers and most, uh, institutions that we step into appreciate the fact that they could take off their titles, at least for that hour and a half and two hours and kind of just, kind of just deal with self. And, you know, I, I would say that's kind of something overall and across the board that we've noticed, just in most of the situations, um, and interactions that we had, you know, just people just really just, you know, they want to be human, for lack of a better word. They just want to be heard. They want to be acknowledged, you know? It was funny, something as simple as a check-in, like, you know, just how we kind of checked in with you all in the beginning. That's a, that's a common practice for Mizan and I. I was just under the assumption that everybody was doing check-ins, but no, you know? And that was a, just, just a simple practice, just like you said, acknowledging who you are, or beyond what you're providing. You know what I mean? Beyond what you're willing to do or what you're coming to do for me, who are you?
Yeah.
And I think that's just an important thing, an important, uh, way of being, an important opportunity for folks to feel, you know, and a lot of our professional development, so.
Yeah. I will say that we have had the blessing of being able to work with four middle schools over the last three years. So it's been a consistent group of folks who've been able to take through a process, right? Like one of the things that we say all the time is that it's not a one-off. You can't like check a box and say we did DEI training, or we can't check a box and say, okay, now we're, now we've done anti-racist training. And now we're all anti-racist, like that, it doesn't work like that to really transform behavior, take some time. So we've had the privilege of being able to work through the OUSD, Office of Equity with four schools for the last three years. Um, and really have seen their growth and development, have them seen start to build, um, more meaningful relationships with each other and with young people. Um, it's starting to help to mitigate some of the challenges that they have, you know, the toxic realities that exist. Um, but really just being able to, um, you know, see the, the work, um, transform, uh, has been really, really, really beautiful, actually. Um, so more to come on that as we continue, um, finish out this year and this kind of season with that work as well too. Thank you for that question. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, and then the question of any sense of how they shift their practice? Want to talk about that?
Um, well, one school said that they no longer need us there anymore.
That's true.
And that was great. You know what I mean?
Very good.
So I think as far as like, you know.
Not in a bad way, like, okay, peace out. But it was like, yeah, actually now we've built the internal capacity for folks to be able to hold space for each other in a really meaningful way. So it sounds crazy, but like we worked ourselves out a job, but honestly, that should be the way. Like we shouldn't have to always continue to be showing up to solve people's conflicts. Like we really want folks to be able to, to have the internal agency to solve their own.
Like you say, we just like to say, creating the culture of wellness.
Yeah.
You know, once folks got that, you know, then it's cool. I mean, we could come, it's like anything, you know? Of course I gotta take my car to the mechanic every once in a while, but when it's rolling, it's rolling.
Hmm.
I gotta go to the mechanic every week.
Yeah.
You know, with some of these, um, like, say a lot of these things and concepts work, work for foreign. And like you say, especially in, in many of our workplaces is we're just working in silos. Like we're going, it's like blinders on, I'm here to do my job, here to lead. And, you know, it's debatable. I, I personally don't feel like that's the, the way to get the, the, the best results out of the company. I, I think, I think really, you know, understanding what makes each other tick and understanding how, how to hold each other within the space, I think will, will bring the best results.
Hmm.
Me personally.
Yeah. Yeah. Are there any other thoughts from folks? Um, how does this resonate with folks? How are folks want to go use this in their own world or, you know, where are y'all at? How would y'all like to build? So we have just a few more minutes and maybe, uh, um, our contact details are definitely here. Um, both our website, um, our, um, Facebook, which we're not so active on. Um, and I'll just be honest, we all, we have like this love hate relationship with, with social media. It's just a thing, right? We're kind of old school that way. But nonetheless, all of our contact details are here for y'all to, um, to, to bear with folks. Um, let's see, I think this thing is pinned, so it makes it hard to see. Let's see. Oh, uh, Devon is saying he wants to buy the card deck. Um, why don't you email us Devon and we could work out, um, how to fix that or something. It should be, we have been getting orders over the last couple of weeks, so, um, it should be straight. Um, but if you email us Devon, then we could work it out. If it's something happening on your end, we got you.
Yeah, Spare Works at Gmail, it'll, it'll come right to me.
Yeah.
Work out all those details.
Yes, yes. And Melissa is asking.
Can support more work from movement leaders to create more liberatory spaces.
Uh, we don't, I don't know if we have enough time for that full answer, but, um, we, we definitely have a, a quick answer is, um, you know, fund the people on the ground who are doing the work. Oftentimes funders, um, look to the same network of people to fund the same people consistently. And so I would just say, you know, spread, spread the love, um, and really create liberatory spaces that the funding really comes to support what the, um, agencies on the ground are actually looking at, um, needing and wanting and take direction from them as opposed to being really prescriptive with what the outcomes should be. Um, oftentimes the folks who are on the front lines can do that, know exactly what is needed. And so just cooperating. And so just core operating or unrestricted funds or, um, what do they call it? Trust-based philanthropy, right, is a, is a way to create liberatory spaces. Um, so just thinking about those things um as well too. Um, thank you for that question.
Yeah, and and to add on to that, like Mizan saying that effortlessly, I just feel like you gotta create spaces to even get there. You know what I mean? And what I mean by that is I feel like, you know, philanthropy should also go through, what does it mean to be feeling, you know, liberatory? Like, they have to explore those, those, like, Spirit Works can't say this is what you need to do. As opposed, I I think it's more impactful if those cohorts of of funders get together.
Yeah.
And and maybe have an external facilitator like a Spirit Works, for example, or an ex, you know, you know, C two or whatever, and and take them through a process. And, you know, at the end of those processes, make some commitments to kinda how they wanna maybe shift towards a more liberatory framework.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
To me, to me, that that's more, I I don't know, as opposed to me saying do this. Because that, it's gonna stay, it's gonna have more of an impact. Once it, once you embody and and once you see like, dang, okay, yeah, this is, I'm on purpose now.
Right.
I'm not just on transaction, I'm actually on transformation, I'm on purpose.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Oh, I realized that now our, now you can see our um piece.
Yeah, exactly, I s- I see entirely, yeah, you know what I mean?
There actually is some work that's happening um around that line, actually, Carla, if you email us, we can connect you to some of the folks at some at the Black Freedom Fund or San Francisco Foundation that have been having conversations with funders of of black organizations and black funders in particular. So um, I'd love to build with you on that um as well. That we, that's, those are definitely necessary and good conversations um to have, so, thank you, Carla. Thank you, everyone. Well, in our last five minutes, our last few minutes, we just to love to hear um just one word, one thing you are thankful for, one thing you've taken with you from this conversation, um, one way you're gonna go on and create liberatory spaces, you choose. I'll let you be, have agency in your world around what it is that you wanna take with you today, um, how you wanna close out. Gratitude is always a way, um, but also inspiration is also there too. So you choose, just put it in the chat, we'd love to hear from folks. Um, thank you, Devon, yes, yes. Maybe Devon, not sure, I'm sorry if I messed it up. Um, but committed to learning about liberation ongoing, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, yes.
Yeah, I hope it is, I hope it is Devon, cuz we've been.
This whole time, I'm sorry, I just realized as I read it again, forgive me. Yeah.
Thank you for your grace.
Absolutely, y'all, I I will say that, you know, we do this a lot, but this was a new system for us to work with today. So we just working it all out and definitely appreciate y'all grace and um and holding us in your good thoughts as we work through the technology today. Um, so definitely thankful for that. Um, yes, yes. Thank you, Carla, yes, 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 yes. I see y'all, we appreciate you all, and I really do hope that you continue to um build with the tomorrow session of what C two has to offer. Um, and really just appreciate um Kyriishi and the C two team for inviting us to be with you all today. Um, so thank you, thank you, thank you, much appreciation, says, um, whoa, sorry, for um from Kimmy. Yes, yes, thank you so much, thank you, thank you. Appreciate you all, thanks, Zakiya, are you Zakiya from um East Bay Community Foundation? Yes, yes, I hope so, cuz I see your emails from a San B L O all the time, if so, and just shouting out, that's dope work, I really, really, really appreciate. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Yep, yep. Thank you, Kaisen. Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Good thing, Zakiya, thank you, thank you, thank you, appreciate being in the space with you always. Yeah, just showing much gratitude to you all, everyone, I hope you go out and have a wonderful, powerful rest of your day. If we could unmute, we would do it and close us out this way, we'll say it together. We'll say it together, if we, if we could unmute, we would hear all your voices saying this mantra that we always like to close out with, but we'll do it right here, y'all.
Yes, I am because we are.
I am because we are.
We are because I am.
We are because I am.
May the circle be unbroken.
May the circle be unbroken, that's right, y'all.
Give me thanks, y'all, like you said. Hopefully, this is just, you know, the beginning, this is step one, you could always reach out to us, Mizan and I are always available if you or your organization wanna continue these conversations. Um, if you wanna get down some coaching hours, kinda whatever, you know, w- we're open, we're here. Um, I'm actually dropping a new album, uh, the beginning of next year, so look out for that, Spirit of the Nation.
Music.
Um, but yeah, you know, good thanks, y'all, good thanks, y'all, all is well, all is blessed, thank you to C two. Kyriishi, as always, good thanks.
Yes, thank you all. Blessings, everybody, I put Spirit of the Nation music in there on all streaming platforms, go and check some good, the good love out. But many blessings to you all, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Blessings to everybody. I'm trying to figure out how to save the chat real quick, so we don't lose your.
Maybe Domo is is doing that?
Maybe, have a good night, everyone, thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah. Good thanks, y'all.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, blessings, everyone.